All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'll bring the committee whole to order and we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence, please. And clerk, roll call for attendance.
Yes, Councilmember Kearns here. Councilmember Motney here. Sorry, I skipped you, didn't I? Councilmember Mosley here. Got excited. Councilmember Danenberger here. Councilmember Straza here. Councilmember Hendricks here. Councilmember Ward here. Councilmember Lee here. Councilmember Scott here. And Mayor Brady.
Here. Thank you. Is there public comment this evening?
We received no emailed public comment. We did have one person, Chris Mitchell, registered to speak, but I have no members of the publics present, and so we can move forward with the consent agenda.
No other members in the audience then? We'll move forward with the consent agenda, and since there are no items to be presented on the consent agenda, we will move into the regular agenda. And the first item in the regular agenda at tonight's meeting is the Bloomington Public Library renovation and expansion first year update presentation, and we would like to ask the director to come forward. Janie Hamilton, please. There she is.
Thank you so much for having me. I am pleased to share about our first year at the Bloomington Public Library in our newly expanded and renovated space. Next slide, please. So I just wanted to show a brief timeline. So on August 1st of 2024, 250 people joined us to celebrate the official reopening of the library after 26 months of phased construction, during which staff worked really hard to keep the full services available to the public. The project added over 21,000 square feet and renovated more than 57,000 square feet of existing space. The library now includes an innovation lab, two recording studios, eight study rooms, one conference room, three community rooms, a discovery play area for kids, a drive up window, and more. Next slide. And so the project in the end was $26.1 million. And we were able to use over the life of the library, the board has been very conscious about saving money. So we had about $4 million that we were able to use in reserves. We did receive a $7.1 million grant from the state, which was fantastic. And then we fundraised about $700,000. And then we had the $14.2 million bond. So about 45% came from the savings and fundraising, and 54% of the project came from the bond. Next slide. So as we were designing the project, we really landed on four priorities that we wanted to achieve as we were creating new spaces in the library. And those priorities were access, collaboration, innovation, and education. Next slide. So in our first year, we had 292,714 visits, and our peak day was July 28th. 1,756 visits on that single day. We had 1,329,938 items checked out, and 15,285 of those items were picked up via the drive up window. We're also very proud to receive an award from Lifesill. They gave us their 2024 advancing community access award for all the new offerings in the library that make it more accessible to the community. Next slide. We are seeing a lot of collaboration in the space, too. We had 929 groups meet in the community in conference rooms, and 6,195 groups and individuals used the study rooms. Also, one of our collaboration spaces that we don't really track numbers for are the teen zone, and we have a lot of teens enjoying that space. And just a little thing that we overheard from the teens, there were two teens helping each other, and after they had interacted for a while, one of the teens excitedly asked the other, do you want to be friends now? Next slide. And then we have an innovation lab and recording studios that are equipped with money from the library foundation, and they include things like 3D printers, cricket machines, laser engravers, photography light boxes, sewing machines, microphones. And so we had 375 people use our innovation lab, and 723 people used those recording studios. Next slide. And then we've had a lot of programs at the library as well. We had 435 children's programs with 50,419 attendees at those programs, 156 programs with 5,645 attendees, 164 adult programs with 3,367 attendees. Next slide. And so most of my presentation, I focused on numbers, but we're also hearing about the ways we're truly impacting and improving lives. So this was a note from someone who's been using the library. "I want to share my gratitude for your team's culture. I spent months using your study rooms to complete my master's degree in nursing. Every time I came to use a study room, each and every one of you were kind, inviting, and some of you recognized me by name. It really makes the way we treat each other, or it really is the way that we treat each other that makes a difference. Thank you for being a blessing in my life." Next slide. And just if you have any questions.
Are there members that have questions or comments for the director? Member Ward?
I'll just, oops, I'll just echo the wonderful comments that the person who wrote the letter said. "It's really been a wonderful space over the last year. I myself have been to numerous community meetings, gatherings there. I've had students of my own use the recording studio to create a podcast. And some of those are from out of town, and they've said this is the most beautiful, most friendly, useful library that they've ever seen." So, thank you.
Yes, and to add on to that, I have had multiple people in the community. I've seen them in the library giving tours to their out of town friends. It's really a point of pride.
Other members?
Yeah, I also just wanted to say the priority of access, I think you can feel it so immediately with the way that it's, the building is oriented and all the opportunities and different things to do there. I think the meeting rooms is something that has really been great from, of all sizes. So that the big conferences, so that, you know, there's community meetings down to being able to get like the small, kind of like boardroom kind of conference room is so great to be able to do that for free and to make collaborating and meeting really easy. And I went through the training to get 3D, to do 3D printing, and I'm still figuring out what I'm gonna make first, but it's exciting to have that kind of stuff available to the community. So, thank you.
Member Lee?
So thank you for sharing the statistics. I appreciate the call out for the STEM stuff with the innovation. A quick question. So do people have to provide their own like filament and stuff? Or does the library provide that? How does that work?
So if we're doing a program that we're all, they're all making the same thing, we do provide supplies for that within the program, but if someone's using the 3D printer for their own project, like Jenna mentioned, they would either bring their own filament or we sell at cost. I think it's gray filament.
Or Scott. So, quick question.
Scott, I'm sorry.
So you said, sorry, number of question. 293K visits. Do you know at all about the year before, or sorry, the year before the renovation, what those numbers were?
Yeah, so I looked that up. So we did, it's hard because we went from COVID into construction, right? So our numbers have been skewed for a little bit, but we did, it did beat 2020. We just had a tiny bit impacted by COVID, and it beat those numbers by more than just the missing months. And then be, of course, all the COVID and construction months. And then the, it was, we, library trends, there you've been seeing kind of some ups and downs with visits, and all libraries are experiencing that. So before that, we surpassed back to 2007 is what I found, so.
Gotcha. Well, I'd like to add my voice, too, to the people that are super psyched. I did not realize how recent it was that this was completed. I've been there multiple times, and it truly is a place for community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that was member Scott. Any other members comment? I, too, want to say thank you and congratulations to you and all your staff. As we had a number of town halls throughout the year, I guess. Do you have an idea, once those rooms are fully open, and I know it depends on how many chairs you put out, but maybe a ballpark in how many people it can comfortably fit?
Yeah, it does depend on the layout of the rooms, but I think fire code is about 300.
Okay. And the sound system has been working correctly for you? You know, we had some challenges, and you were working through, I think, a new sound system one of those times. It was, so I'm glad to hear that. But thank you, and we appreciate all you're doing, your leadership in that, dedication of your staff as well. It's a great community, community resource and gathering spot. Thank you.
Thank you.
If not, any other comments? We'll move on to item B, which is a presentation on the 250th July 4th celebration for next year, as requested by Parks and Recreation Department, who are coming forward, and our city manager, Mr. Jurgens, would introduce the members, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we wanted to take a little bit of time to talk about an upcoming celebration. Next year, the country will be celebrating its 250th birthday, and wanted to talk about what more we may want to do as a community to help celebrate that. And so our Parks team is going to lead us through that, and we'll start with Eric Veal, our Parks Director.
Thank you, City Manager Jurgens, Council and Mayor. Glad to be here this evening. Parks and Recreation looks forward to sharing with you tonight a little bit about our thoughts on what's possible for the future and what we do currently regarding the America 250th Celebration and our fireworks procurement. Tonight, Parks and Recreation, Mr. Dave Lamb, our Assistant Director, and Mr. James Wayne, our Superintendent of Recreation, will share a presentation and answer some questions on these topics if you have them at the end. We look forward to your feedback, as we will touch on what we could do in 2026. So now I'll turn it over to Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Director Veal. Mayor, City Council, City Manager, thank you for having us here tonight. As you know, the Fourth of July at Miller Park is a family affair where generations have attended annually, creating family memories at the prominent city of Bloomington Park. While Bloomington Parks and Recreation is the ones here tonight sharing this information, I do want to note that this event itself is one of the largest in the community of the year, and we partner internally with police, fire, public works, and administration to ensure it's a successful event. I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to James Wayne, our Superintendent of Recreation, and he's gonna give you the bulk of the presentation.
Thank you, Dave. Good evening. During our presentation tonight, I'll be reviewing what we currently offer for events on the Fourth of July, and I'll gauge the city council's feedback on some potential options for new ideas in 2026. Next slide, please. We always have a great turnout at Miller Park. Throughout the day, as we feature paddleboat rides, the Miller Park Zoo is open. People can play mini golf at the putting zoo. Concessions are on sale. A car cruise celebration occurs, and of course, the Sky Concert Fireworks Show at night. There's a copy of the Fourth of July packet, of the event map, excuse me, in your packet, in case you wanted to review. The Parks and Recreation Department also hosts a couple of events on the Fourth, not at Miller Park, that we wanted to mention. The Red, White, and Blue Classic at the Den Golf Course is always popular, plus our Red, White, and Blue Special Events at both aquatic facilities. The Evening Sky Concert Fireworks Show is a collaboration between the city of Bloomington and the town of Normal. We work together to gather proposals for the fireworks, select a vendor, and coordinate a choreographed and synchronized show that's set to music and shown on WJBC. The fireworks are also sponsored by State Farm. Next slide, please. Post-COVID, historic Miller Park continues to be the hub as the community comes together to celebrate this holiday. What started back at 6,300 visitors in 2021 has grown to an increase of over 73% to 10,900 attending this past year. While these figures only include Miller Park, as we know, there's many more that are watching at home, in their neighborhoods, and throughout the city of Bloomington and beyond. Next slide, please. In homage to America and the 250th, we plan to feature two additional nods to the Stars and Stripes beginning this next year. First, we'll feature custom park banners with a city logo on light posts throughout Miller Park. If you have your packet in front of you, we provided some examples. Moving forward, we plan to feature these banners on posts annually throughout Miller Park from Memorial Day through Labor Day each year. Number two, we'd like to feature an oversized American flag hanging from a crane during the week of July 4th at Miller Park. Just two dynamic ways to celebrate our country's patriotism. Next slide, please. Since 2026 is America's 250th, members of our Parks and Recreation team brainstormed how we could enhance America's upcoming semi-quinsentennial celebration. An aerial show that continues to gain momentum in communities, stadiums, and on shorelines across America and the world are drone sky shows. We reached out to four drone companies for details on hosting a potential show. While more drones equals more detailed animations, we do believe that a 100 drone show would be suitable, if the council chose to support. Drone shows are typically 10 to 15 minutes in length with custom music and animations. The host site location is to be determined, but we believe that an event could be held on Friday, July 3rd of 2026, and that the drones could be featured in conjunction with some family-friendly activities, some fun photo opportunities, and some recognition of American heroes. Worth noting, this event is just a concept at this time. Of the companies we've checked with, drone shows are fully booked on the Fourth of July, so the event would have to be on July 3rd. Next slide, please. Fireworks have been a staple of city celebrations since at least 1921. Our contract with Gateway Fireworks Display Our contract with Gateway Fireworks Display out of St. Louis was completed in 2025. So there is a need for a new agreement for 2026 and beyond. Our traditional fireworks show lasts approximately 22 minutes and includes a variety of three, four and five inch shells, plus some special effects. This past year, the cost to the city and the town was thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-five cents, so around forty thousand dollars each, while State Farm and Cumulus Radio generously provided ninety-six hundred dollars in support to each community. We've had talks recently with Town of Normal representatives. We believe that fireworks are a fabric of our community's annual celebration. Along with Normal Parks and Recreation, there is interest in a larger and longer show in 2026 to ring in America's 250th, while returning to a traditional show in 2027 and beyond. A larger and longer fireworks show could be an option for an extra $2,000 in 2026. I'm going to turn it back over to Director Veal for some final remarks.
All right. Thank you, James and Dave. So Council, in short, you heard what we currently do. We have a few ideas of proposals that we can do in the future for this big celebration. We will wrap up our presentation here momentarily, but we'd have a couple of questions if you want to consider. One, should we stick with our traditional show and partner with Normal Parks and Recreation and JBC and State Farm? Should we go bigger and better with that show of fireworks for America's 250th? Or should we add an additional event on the July 3rd, which it looks like we are able to to do at this time, but we'll fill up quickly? So we are looking for your feedback and appreciate any ideas as we do need to go out currently to bid for the fireworks so that we can have them again on July 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the council with questions or comments? Member Ward?
Yeah, thanks for this and some really interesting ideas. I really like the idea of the live music. I think having some of the the community musicians invited to to play would be a really, really cool thing. A pretty meaningful thing if we, I don't know if any of the the District 87 or Unit 5 or, you know, any of the the high school bands would be interested in that, but our community musicians. I think we've got a lot of talented people here. I also, I like the idea of of expanding the fireworks. It seems like a pretty reasonable price. I I'm kind of neutral on the drones. I feel like that that's kind of pricey for for a 15-minute show. I think that that perhaps we could use that money a little bit more meaningfully. And the other thing that I'd like to propose is that we have a reading of the Declaration of Independence, a live reading, and I would actually invite my fellow council members. I think all of us can read. Maybe it would be a meaningful thing to have each of us who want to participate in that read a part of the Declaration of Independence.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other members with suggestions, comments? Member Monty?
I just want to say thank you for the great job you guys have done with this too in the past. So really appreciate it. I feel uneducated to ask this question, but with the downtown streetscape, there's the plan for the light show at some point in a phase X or whatever phase it is. You know, which I understand had a patriotic and somewhat historical theme to it. I just don't know if there's any connecting point between that and your comment about the one-time light show. You know, I I don't have enough information to make a recommendation, but just making that connection.
Well, I appreciate that comment. Our current participation with engineering on that project is more trees, shrubs, benches than the actual light show itself. But that's definitely something we can investigate for the future. It sounds exciting.
Other members? If not, a couple of questions. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
I flipped it on late. Yeah, maybe just to echo, I like the idea of there being extra things to do. But kind of similar to member Ward, kind of like maybe, you know, maybe the drone money for extra things to do instead of drones. You know, that kind of thing, because I like the community involvement and different, you know, like reading the declaration, you know, things like that. So, yeah, I like that idea. And again, yes, as a as Ward one representative of Miller Park and a family that we get together for the Fourth of July very nearby every single year. Love, love what you all do.
Yeah, there members? Remember Lee?
Yeah, so I'll agree with Molly. You know, the $2,000 for an extended show is reasonable. With the drone show, I kind of like that idea because I've seen some drone shows. If you go out on YouTube and see some YouTube videos, if it's well done, they're they're really neat. I think they featured it in one of the Olympics in the previous past. That's where they kind of made their big debut. So I like the idea. And I also like the idea of, yeah, having having like a weekend-long celebration. And maybe we can brainstorm some ideas on what that might include. Live music is always popular here in in Bloomington. So, yeah, I I thank you for those ideas and maybe we can brainstorm some more as we approach the the celebration.
Any other members? You had made mentioned time is of the essence. Can you emphasize again kind of a timetable for us of what we need to kind of come up with to respect that time?
The current fireworks company that the Town of Normal and we work with Gateway, they know that we would like to continue with them. Obviously, we're seeking your feedback tonight. So assuming we do that, we would like to get that into the council queue, but we have to go out to bid. So what we do is we take a bid, a joint bid with the Town of Normal that ends up in two separate contracts, one for them in order to get better pricing, we believe, efficiencies. And then we would bring that to council, hopefully by the end of the year or January at the latest, because we got to get it in this fiscal year. The other piece, if you may ask, is the drone show. If we were to include that, which is up to you guys, that would probably need to be at least secured really soon because even though that is not on the Fourth, that is one of the hottest things across the community or country right now.
If if was a drone show on July 3rd, I think there was mention of that. Is that something we could we could try and showcase downtown more and have an event on Friday, the 3rd downtown? Family-oriented, an event there in those locations, maybe around our landmark of this county, the Museum of History? As a backdrop?
We did not research that and the only piece I can share and James can maybe allude to this too. He spoke with the companies. You need a flat, open area that they don't fly over people and vehicles to do the show. So I'm not sure if we could do it at the courthouse. But if they're somewhere else where they can stage without flying over people in case they drop, then that could be an option potentially. We did not research that. We looked at parks.
So maybe there's no drone show, let's say, but the emphasis on the 3rd downtown with the direction towards 87's band, maybe, or other high school bands bringing those families down of not only the students in the band, obviously, but those that might want to enjoy some form of a special street festival for the Fourth of July anniversary. So maybe we can pursue that. Member Danimer?
Yeah, just a quick question. You all have to educate me because I haven't seen one of these drone shows, but in terms of sound, how does that affect pets in relation to fireworks?
Well, there are no, other than the buzzing of the motors, the sound is actually generated through music that would be provided in addition to that.
Okay, thank you. I thought so. I just didn't know. I live under a rock. So appreciate it. Thank you.
It's okay.
Any other members?
Thanks for all the feedback. You know, one thing I'm I'm gonna speak and I have no idea what the answer to this is, but you know, Councilmember Monty brought up the idea of the projection on the Courthouse Museum. We could, you know, that will not be in place before the Fourth of July in 2026. But we could see if there's a program like that out there where we could set up a a show and if there is a desire to try and do something downtown, we could more focus on what those options might be and and bring that back to the council and then maybe, you know, make sure there's not like a smaller price drone show, what we would get for that. It sounds like there's at least some concern with the with the cost of that. But we could explore a couple of those options and and bring those back to the council. It sounds like there's a consensus that everybody would like to see something special done, maybe on the 3rd and we can we can brainstorm and see what that might be.
Right. Sorry. Remember mostly?
Yeah, as you guys explore that too, especially downtown, can you also tell us the impacts of that as well? Because I know there'll still be construction going on as well as, you know, as we deal with parking. We know with the, when we go to the zoo, that you have more range and more effects. And then I'll just add, you know, I know it comes with a cost right now, but maybe they'll negotiate a little bit with the drones because if you see a drone show, you're gonna have a drone show every single year. Because it is completely different than fireworks and like you talked about the Olympics and like Stone Mountain and things like that. Now that they have those, they they are really, really nice. So I'm definitely interested in supportive.
Yeah, I just had something that occurred to me about, I guess, like collaboration with other organizations or places in town that that may also want to celebrate this special anniversary. Like I just thought of David Davis Mansion and like the historical component of, you know, the found, you know, like the history of our country and things like that. So I mean, obviously the History Museum, but other entities like that, maybe there's some, I don't know what kind of crossover it is. I know we're talking drones and fireworks and things, but like community involvement and events and family-friendly things. It just makes me think of that that type of stuff, too.
Thank you, and we do that as much as we can. And if I may add one quick point to Councilmember Monty, I apologize. I didn't realize you were talking about projection to the courthouse. I thought you were talking about the ring down by the brass pig when I answered your question earlier. I apologize.
No problem. I was thinking about the courthouse. So thank you so much.
Member Lee?
Yeah, so the 3rd is a Friday and then the 4th is a Saturday. Will there will there be a farmer's market Saturday? Do we usually have one if it falls on the 4th?
Yeah, we didn't.
Yeah, and I didn't know if if we if that was going to happen, then, you know, there would be some coordination with the downtown area as well. So just just a question that popped into my mind.
We'd be happy to coordinate with the the downtown group. We we don't run the farmer's market, but the city does. So we know the people that do.
Thank you very much and we will certainly seek everyone's continued input on the issue and matter so we can get the ideas flowing. Thank you again. Next is presentation on the citywide bulk waste pickup. And City Manager Jurgens will address that as we have members coming up to test to speak.
Thank you. We are going to ask our Public Works Director, Moes Ricky, and Assistant Director, Cooleyen Winterlin. And then we have Sue McGlaughlin, who oversees the Public Works Department, start some discussion tonight on some potential changes to bulk waste. Obviously, something we're always doing is trying to figure out how we can do things better, how we can improve upon things. This crew just got done with the the most recent bulk pickup, had a great success. I think Bo said it's it was the best he's done in his tenure as as the director. But as they've been going through this, there are some ideas to potentially improve things even further. Some ideas we think that the residents will also appreciate. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over and Sue, are you gonna kick this off? So turn it over to Sue.
Thank you, Manager Jurgens. If I could have the presentation. As Mr. Jurgens said, we've been looking at this. You know, a lot of you probably weren't here, but back in, I think it was 2018, we changed and we opened up the CCC. Before that, we used to do curbside pickup, kind of like what we do in May and October. And I think the thought was to be more efficient at that time using the CCC and save money and whatnot. And we have found over these seven years that that's not necessarily the case. And so we've been evaluating how the program works now and what we think we should go to moving forward. So currently, as you know, we do the biannual pickup curbside for free at your house in May and in October. We just finished, kudos to the crews. They did a fantastic job kicking it out in one week. And then we also have the Citizens Convenience Center, we call it the CCC, for disposal as well. We take bulk, we take landscape waste, we take recycling and appliances. And then if you do put something at your curb, we'll pick it up for $25 a bucket. And a bucket is typically, you know, size of a couch, maybe a couple of dressers. Maybe that pile might be a little more than a bucket, but maybe two buckets. And then contractors' waste is a hundred dollars a bucket and that's our current program. Next slide, please. The issue that we've run into is what we call the abuse of the CCC or the exploitation. We're finding that contractors, landlords, junkers, people that, you know, turnover properties who actually live within the city or have, you know, participated in our solid waste program, they can come in and drop loads for free. Sometimes we've seen loads of 13 mattresses in one drop or multiple trailers where they have an employee in each trailer, you know, lined up to dump at the CCC. You know, we also are finding, I'm sure you've seen in your own neighborhoods, where right before the bulk waste pickup, sometimes several weeks before our biannual, piles are, you know, appearing on the curb or next to the house, you know, they're ready to put it on the curb. Well, obviously, that doesn't look very good and it also draws pests and rodents and all kinds of unsightly things. We're also already providing that curbside pickup. As I said, if you put it out, we'll pick it up and we'll charge you. But what happens is, you know, we have to, it's not very efficient. We're going up and down the streets, you know, seeing these piles that then crews have to go back up and and pick and it's not, you know, orderly and efficient. And then finally, you know, it's difficult for some of our residents, whether they're disabled, whether they're senior citizens, maybe they don't have a truck. The ability to take that those items down to the CCC to get picked up if they don't want to pay the $25. So there's a multitude of issues. I think our biggest one is the exploitation by contractors and landlords. So we said, well, let's take a look. What can we do? Next slide, please. The other thing that we noticed as we were looking is, you know, how is it used and the tonnage? So the blue is your, what we get invoiced. As you can see, May and October are larger than the others, obviously. But if you notice the pattern, it doesn't really change much across the year. So, you know, and then the orange is what's brought into the CCC, which is pretty consistent. So that doesn't even change when you have your May and October events. Next slide, please. And, you know, I never wanted to walk into this with Public Works by saying, oh, we're gonna save money or make money. You know, this is not, I think we all understand, it's not a profit-making operation. So you're always going to have a loss and I don't want to send the wrong message saying we're gonna make money on this. But certainly I think we can draw down those those costs if we can eliminate or limit the contractors and landlords. Next slide, please. So what we're looking at is I'm I'm sure a lot of residents will be very pleased to hear that we're looking at going back. Back to the biweekly free pickup at the curb. The first bucket would be free. Again, it's about the size of a couch or a couple of dressers. And then $30 a bucket after the first bucket. The reason why we're raising it or suggesting to you to raise it is 2009. is 2009 is the last time we looked at that fee. It's been $25 for almost 20 years. But that we would also recommend suspending operations during leaf pickup. Now, you know, if you have some kind of issue, you know, you call us, we're going to pick it up. But that daily automatic, you know, during leaf operations would be suspended. And then leaving the CCC for yard waste and recycling only. That way, we totally eliminate the bulk waste drop off, you know, exploitation. It would still be open for yard waste or, you know, you have a lot of recycling. We do offer recycling bins, but if you have a lot of it. And then closing January through March. This does a couple of things. One is then we don't, you know, we don't have to man it during snowstorms. We can put two employees back out into the solid waste program for any number of things. You still have the recycling and we can still pick up your appliance upon request. And then also those people, when you, if you put them back out into the solid waste program, might be able to get a second street sweeper. If you'll notice at the end of the slide, we used to do over 9,000 miles annually, which keeps our inlets cleaned, you know, keep things from backing up and flooding. And so far, we've only done 6,500 this year. So that would allow another person, hopefully, to have time to jump in another street sweeper. And one more slide, please. And just to wrap up, to make it clear, is again, the first bucket would be free, biweekly. And we're looking at the $30 a bucket for the second bucket and then 60 for the third and 90 for the fourth. The reason we're proposing this is again, it's more for the abusers, the contractors and the landlords that are putting out. We even saw it last week, you know, people putting out move out piles, contractor piles without getting a permit. And, you know, we're trying to, you know, deter that. Again, we haven't raised this fee since 2009. And there is $100 a bucket. If you do, you know, homeowner hires a contractor, they get a permit. We're not proposing any change to that. But it also helps kind of encourage people. You know, if you're going to, you know, go in and redo some rooms in your house, get a dumpster. You know, it might actually save you money. We'd like to look at maybe starting this in January. That gives us time to get the word out. We'll work with our communications manager on a social media program to, you know, let everybody know what we're looking at doing. And again, closing January through March, that allows us, you know, more work on street sweeping, snow plowing and whatnot. And Moes, our Public Works Director, and Colleen Winterland, our Assistant Director, are here for questions. I tried to get them to do the presentation, but they wanted me to, Moes knows, should have done it. But we've worked very closely and I think they're firmly behind this recommendation. So any questions?
Questions from members? Member War?
Yeah, thanks for this presentation. And I would say thank you for the bulk pickup this last week. I was always confused in previous goarounds in terms of the schedule. And somehow it made sense to me this year. So I don't know what you did differently because I never understood it before. But whatever you did differently seemed to work this time. So thank you for that.
I appreciate that. So we did work closely and it was with Deputy City Manager, Sue McGlaughlin and Colleen Winterland. And of course, our Superintendent of Solid Waste, Shannon Emke, as well as Catherine Murphy. But we use different colors for each of the zones as well as placing their exact dates inside their zone. So there is as little confusion as possible as they took a look at our map for the two weeks of bulk pickup.
Thanks. I did have one question, though, about the proposal. I thought I saw on a couple of different slides, mention of pickup by appointment or on call or something like that. One had to do with appliances specifically, and then the other one didn't. And I'm just, could you say more about that or maybe let us see the slide again or something?
So we have a gentleman that picks up our appliances for us. If the resident will call in and tell us where the appliance is, we'll give him Norm's number. He's more than happy to go get it. Nine times out of 10, though, it's already gone. He just does this for the city as a service for us.
And then the other one was just more of a general kind of pickup, right?
I think what Sue was saying is that we would not pick up, we would suspend bulk pickup during leaf season. But if you had a situation, then we would go ahead and make sure that we kept the guys or something and had them go out and pick up the situation. Say you had somebody graduate, you know, in the fall or something, you have a graduation party, whatever. Needed that stuff picked up.
And that would still be the first bucket free kind of thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just curious, what percentage of your current drop offs at the CCC are yard waste?
I would have to check those numbers to give you exactly what percentage they are. I wouldn't know that off the top of my head.
So the two categories that were called out, yard waste and recycling, just any idea of what your daily traffic is for that?
A lot of what we get in during the summer is grass clippings. The EPA put that they can't put it on the curb anymore. So we have a packer truck there so that they can bring in their grass clippings. And then we have a place we go out for bid. And we have a place where we can take the grass clippings, the same place where we take our leaves. It's just a service we provide.
Is that geographically within proximity of us? I guess I'm just wondering, as you saw for this problem, is there an opportunity to just bypass the CCC process and go straight to the entity that you're ultimately taking these yard waste to?
No, the farmer wouldn't have residents on his land. We, you know, he has the city trucks going out there. They know when they can get in, it's too wet, whatever.
And I wasn't suggesting that the residents would go directly to him. I was just thinking, you know, about the actual requirement of having man hours at this CCC. If there's some way else to look at the process?
It's a seasonal employee that would be running the, you know, that would be taken in the, for the brush and the recycling and everything. It wouldn't be a full-time employee. He's a miscellaneous or a seasonal employee that works for us that checks everybody in.
And I guess, you know, again, just to be clear, I was just talking about the requirement to man the CCC.
Yeah.
As opposed to the, you know, person who's conveying.
I understand what you're saying. And yeah, we can certainly look at that, at least look at the numbers. And since he, they don't, not quite sure off the top of their head, but we can look at it.
And no need to get back to me. I was just curious, just thinking about, you know, how big of an impact is that? And is there something else you can do?
And that might make sense as we look at this concept plan for the Public Works campus. Because we need to decide, there's going to be a lot of work in order to reopen the CCC at that location. And what is that going to look like? So that might be an opportunity, too.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment, not a question. I've had several people in the course of time, even before this came up, of asking if it was ever possible to go back to a more regular bulk pickup. And I know that they could always call and stuff like that. But I think some of my neighbors and people in my ward have basically asked, they were looking forward to, when they saw this on the agenda, that they were hoping that this would be something we could move towards. And I think it's great that we, well, the cost is not going to change where it's going to be more costly. And it's just going to build, you'll build and manage it better with leaf season and the winter time. It's, I think this is great that the pricing seems good and also help reduce the amount of abuse that's been going on. Thank you for everything you guys do.
Any other members?
Yeah, so you've kind of raised my curiosity with this street sweeper. Is that currently being done and how is that scheduled? And then how much additional cost while adding a second sweeper be? I like the idea, just keeping the inlets clean. And I used to see sweet, street sweepers. You can say that fast 10 times. But I don't see them out there very often now. So, yeah, if you can just go into that a little bit.
We currently have two street sweepers. We run one during the day and then we have a gentleman that works nights. And we do it at night. We downtown get swept twice a week due to the night sweeper, plus he sweeps all night long. So we used to run three before, through attrition and some employees. And then this would give us the ability to get the third street sweeper back out there. Because we have two, we could run two during the day and then just one at night.
Do you just mainly do the downtown area or?
No, we try to do every street in the city of Bloomington 12 times a year. That's every three weeks because you got to figure January and February, it's too cold. You can't run water in those trucks, you know. So we really try to focus on the street sweepers running during that time. And we try to get to every street 12 times a year.
Thank you.
Did I see that this might free up some staff for snow removal purposes if this was carried out? Was that on the, bring up staff somehow for other, other work if this was?
Work, yes. It could include snow plowing, street sweeping, storm work, that kind of work, yes.
Any idea how many people we're talking about?
Two.
Apparently, we have two full-time employees that work over at the CCC with our seasonal that checks them in, just hauling the stuff out.
Okay. And then what would this, if this didn't move forward, Mr. Jurgens, what would this take from council? Is it something ordinance wise or just procedural?
Yes, we'd bring forward an ordinance either at the next meeting or one of the meetings in November.
Thank you. No other questions or comments. Thank you both and Sue for your information. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. I think from the agenda, that's the items to discuss. And now move into if there's a city manager's discussion.
Just a couple of things, if I go to the next slide, Phil. First, just a reminder to the community, there is the ability to comment on the second draft of the proposed future strategic land use map prepared by the county. That process ends Wednesday, October 22nd. We have the website, we have a QR code. Once that comment process is done, the county will prepare, provide, I think, a third draft of the map. And then there will be some, I believe, some ability to comment on that as well. So just wanted to remind the community that that process is still open. Next slide. Just want to share, the Bloomington Bison did have their opening night for their second season with the city. It was really great to see Mayor Brady with Mayor Kous out there on the ice dropping the puck. So we were thrilled to have them do that. And a record crowd at the arena for the game. They were very pleased and it was a great game to watch and to see if you could go to the next slide. What my proudest moment is, though, is the concessions. And really want to thank our Arts and Entertainment Director, Anthony Nelson, and his crew, along with Billy Tyus, our Senior Deputy City Manager. Going to the games last year, you know, it's hard to be in there. And jeez, oh my gosh, these lines are incredible. You know, people walking by, not stopping and buying food. And this is something I think we've all heard about events at the arena for years since it opened, that the lines at concerts, it shows, they're just way too long. And so we tasked Anthony and his team to go back and to try and figure this out and come up with a better way to move product within the arena at events. And so we compared the concession sales at the opening night this year compared to 2024. We had about 80 more people. But when you look at that, we had about a 40% increase. We went from 45,000 to 65,000. They did a number of things to get to this number, including different strategies that they deployed throughout the arena. And listening to Anthony talk about it this morning was just energizing. I mean, they were talking about, and I want to give a shout out to Councilmember Montney and others on the council who have been leading this charge of us embracing continuous improvement. But they're talking about, you know, how many seconds it took them to get to an order and to get something completed. And they're, you know, how they can improve things even further. And so, and just hearing the comments from people at the event, just really excited about this. So this is something that we'll watch throughout the season and throughout future concerts and events. But we really hope that we have at least cracked a little bit of the code to help move more product at the arena. Because we're always trying to close that gap of the subsidy that we pay for those operations. And concessions goes a long way to doing that. So I just want to say again, how proud I am of Anthony and Billy and their team for doing this. They literally worked on this since the last game and have put a lot of effort into it. And it really shows. So again, thanks to the staff for that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. And to all involved, Anthony and his team, and I think over 5,000 tickets, pre-sold tickets, somewhere in there? Yeah, was, that's wonderful. So is there any other comments before we ask for a motion and adjournment tonight? There's no executive session, so it's a good thing. Is there a motion from members to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
From Member Strauss, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Member Hendricks and a voice vote?
Aye.
That's very good. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening, everyone.